Forty-three minutes, let's do it. Let's do it. Yeah, I should be able to.
Do you want me to have a discussion? We got this budget meeting that you just said. Just to get feedback from the board and what a good time would be. Could anybody make it at one in the morning?
Right.
To the six P M. or she's talking. She okay.
Well, that's what we just talked kind of early.
How do we find out?
You have to ask.
The discussions.
Yes, thank you, Terry. All right, I'd like to call this meeting or six P M. on Monday, September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Please stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone this evening for the first day of fall, so it has arrived, I believe. Just a few opening remarks. This is a meeting, the school word in public for the purpose of conducting the school corporation's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation as indicated by agenda item number two. The mission of Goshen Community Schools is to inspire innovation, empower potential and enriching our world and our vision. Goshen Community Schools, Elkhart County School District of Choice. Next, approval of tonight's agenda. Do we have any revisions to that?
Mister President, I think we'd like to add a discussion item just to verify the time of our additional budget hearing on Monday. What's the date, what's that date?
Week from today.
A week from today?
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth. We'd like to have a budget hearing at that day. We just need to verify from the board the best time. So I'd like to add that as a discussion item at that time.
All right, so we will add item seven point two, which is budget meeting, time and date discussion.
Kind of a final hurrah on that.
So I guess I will look to another board member to please make an amendment to add seven point two budget meeting time and date as item seven point two under discussion.
I mentioned that we add item seven point two budget meeting discussion.
Okay.
Second.
All right, Mister Goodman made the mo- or made that recommended the amendment, Mister Glick, the second. Any discussion on item at the addition of item seven point two tonight? Seeing shaking heads. All right, all in favor of the amended budget of adding seven point two budget meeting time and date? Please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing, that passes seven zero. All right, so the agenda is approved as amended. And then item one point five, our approval of our minutes from the September eighth, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting. Do we have any revisions to those minutes? All right, seeing none, the minutes are approved as presented. We will now move on to item two, which is a public comment on agenda or non-agenda items. And I'd like to welcome Mister Noel, may he come up, sir.
Glenn Noel, Goshen. Keith, you don't need to bother, I'll be done when I'm done, okay?
You be brief, all right.
No, no, I'm not gonna be brief. So, sorry I wasn't here last board meeting, I was stuck in the hospital. I'd rather been here, but anyways, thought of you. But you know, I did think of you. So I'm gonna go back a couple of years when the Gang of Four. If you're a historian, you know, Gang of Four is actually from, it was labeled in China for criminals that were in upper management by other people in management there that wanted to get rid of them. Except this board didn't do that. I warned the board and the corporation that when the Gang of Four basically flipped off we, the people, by saying, we don't care what anybody says. We don't have to step down, we're above the law, even though we broke the law, we're better than that, we can do whatever we want. I warned it's on trickle downward. And it is happening on a regular basis. You can ask Jim, Alan. Mister Weddle gets the email too. Every time I, it happens at my school, that's West Goshen. You know, Carrie is doing the best she can, but it's a little hard when her hands are tied. And the seat of screw you has already been set in place by this board to parents. And what's next? These kids hear parents say screw you and the teachers get it next. I hear from teachers from elementary to high school, the kids, I don't have to do that crap. Who made you boss? So it comes down to you're teaching no matter what, and sometimes it's negative. And it's going to be continuously negative until the, what's the word I wanna use, atmosphere or the? I'll think of it later. But basically, if the attitude of this board doesn't change, it's gonna get worse and worse. And the part of the problem with that is, I don't know if you're aware of it, but you know, the state of Indiana takes first grade enrollment and figures out how many prison cells to build in the state. That's a sad commentary. So how many first graders are we condemning now? Because we're saying, it's okay to do that. If you don't like it, tough, you don't have to do it, you can tell them they don't have, I'm not going to do it and mommy and daddy's going to back it up. It really doesn't matter. Well, it does matter to me. I really don't care about, well, the board members that need to get off, need to get off now so that we can get a clean, clean, straight up here. Board.
Thank you, Glenn.
No, I ain't done yet, I told you I wasn't done until I was done. So I'm gonna push this through, my constitution doesn't end in three minutes, you know that. So I'm telling the board that they need to get off. Everybody knows who they are, and I love Carrie. Carrie actually confronts these parents as best she can, and it comes down to she doesn't have the support because the board does not give the support downward. And we need to close the whole system down.
We appreciate your comments and we appreciate your looking over West Goshen. We do appreciate that and we, I know Doctor Metcalf and Mister DuBois have had discussions and Miss Garber has got our support in trying to rectify what's going on.
Kid almost got hit today at West Goshen, cutting across, meet mommy at the, at the, at a car in the street. So we don't want another kid hit at West Goshen. I cannot afford a lawsuit. And that's who's that would be paying for. So I suggest the three that know what they need to do, do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. No sugar this time.
With that, that will complete our public comment section this evening. We will now move on to superintendent's reports.
Thank you, Mister President. First up is Doctor Evans, and he's going to give you a quick cash flow kind of review, it's in your packet.
Right, I believe in your packet, I did a cash flow for personnel and other expenses for June, July and August. Next month, I'll give you the quarterly report, this is sort of a quick update. You'd expect June to have about fifty percent expenditures, July about fifty-eight and, and August about sixty-six. We're right there except for operations is running a little hot, that's to be expected. We spend more the first part of the year and the last few months, we kind of backed down from it. So all in all, I think we're expending monies in the right areas and at the right rate.
Any questions for Bob?
What changes with the debt service? Like since those are pretty much fixed payments, I would think since we're down to like forty-three percent.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good point. With debt service, it hasn't changed because we've spent the monies in June and in December, and so we'll get the full expenditure of debt service should end up being in December.
Okay, so it, it just doesn't always track completely even?
Right, right.
Timing issue, right. Any other questions for Bob? Okay, next, next up, we have just a quick, I wanna throw out to the board members that we are meeting to have some initial discussions with Kathy and John and others in regard to pathways and our plan to look at, do we need more pathways and which pathways those might be at the high school? So I just wanna warn you, tell you, and please give us feedback of boards, you're thinking, you know, about something or, you know, give me a call, send me an email, text or whatever. We're starting those conversations in district at this time and maybe get some parent engagement in that, those discussions later too.
Could I ask one question about that?
Yeah.
I'd seen one of the companies that was advertising there this last weekend was doing cybersecurity pathways. Do we have anything like that now or is it being considered? Cause I know that's a growing field with all the threats.
Kathy and I did have a conversation after we were at superintendent and board conference joint meeting. And I went to the A P courses that you can offer, A P on cybersecurity and thought that was interesting. We might have a teacher that could get a few of those courses built into their schedule, but nothing definitive yet. It's hard, you gotta get kids to take them too, so.
Right.
We can offer them and then they gotta be willing and interested to take those, so we're gonna try to go through a process this fall that then would be something we could do every fall as we look at, are we meeting the needs of the students?
Right.
And then also, we wanna, we do wanna make sure they're high wage, high demand career pathways as much as possible, that would be one of them, so. Yeah, it was kind of an interesting way to think about how to do that, so to get the kids to a credit, so, good question. Any other questions? That's all I had there. Next up though is our Operation Excellence commitments and Alan, quick update on Neola?
Neola, our policies are with the company, they are, they should be transposing them into a readable form for you so that you can have them. As soon as we get that, Terry will be notifying you through your email or through a text that you have now have access to it, so you can start reading through that. Our goal would be to kind of keep this on as a discussion item until we actually get it there, but hopefully you'll be able to start before the next meeting.
We're getting a little antsy, to be honest, we've had them for quite a while, we want, we want them to come back to us so we can get them to you guys, so we're gonna put a little pressure on now instead of just waiting patiently. Okay, next up, Bob, just welding update.
Welding, the lab is fully functional, the, it has cleared all the inspections, the sprinkler head that was needed on the one welding hood was installed and inspected and they're using it.
Yep, that's good, yeah, we were, they had done everything they could do without welding, so it was time to weld and those kids are in there doing it now, it's awesome. I do wanna, this is kind of from me and Alan, jump in if you'd like. Doctor Metcalf, Doctor Evans and myself met with the mayor and were informed that starting July one twenty-six, that our SROs would no longer be covered by the city. So what does that mean for us? We have three SROs in our district and we're looking at options on, on what to do, how, how we employ. They're willing to let us employ their officers to be here and, and basically do the same thing, but we're gonna have to pay for it. That will cost the school district between four hundred and four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so anywhere from a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per officer. It hit pretty hard, you know, we're, we were, among other things going on with Senate Bill one, et cetera, that one hit pretty hard. And so we're, we're trying to figure out what we do and how we handle that. So board members, study, think, we're, we're in that process ourselves right now, trying to figure out how do we handle an additional four hundred and fifty thousand dollars potentially expenditure that we didn't have in our budget for next year, so.
Can we get, I guess, some detail on what makes up, is that just straight salary? Is it more than that? Just to have an understanding of what's all in that package? So I think that'd be interesting to see.
Yep. We can get that, I, I mean, from what we were, we just were, at this point, we were just told, I don't know, it's over a hundred thousand dollars for this.
Right, they were, they were referring to use of the equipment, they were referring to their life insurance, their pensions, all that sort of wrapped up together and they gave us one, I believe they said it was a discounted price of a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty per officer.
And I'd be curious, is that, it's obviously, school is not year round, so is that a pro rate, I just, you know, I'd just be interested how that works out? Cause I don't believe, maybe the officers take the summer off, but I don't, I don't think they do. No comment, but that's fine.
I have vacation.
Yeah, correct, yes, which you do.
Yeah, so, yeah, currently, I believe the option is that by covering all this, like a lot of the extra, extra events and stuff, that time is banked, which can then be used for vacation during the summer.
So I'd be, I think, with stuff that we've never had to look at, so be curious to understand how they come up with their.
So two big things that really kind of crushing within the last month for us, we didn't plan for. We've kind of been knowing that we're working towards the twenty-six, end of twenty-six with our operation referendum going away. So we have kind of had a plan for that, we felt pretty comfortable with that because that's something we've known about for a while. But the local option income tax, we're gonna lose one point one million dollars, maybe a little bit more than that, but one point one million dollars. And then if you add this to it, we're looking at about a million and a half additional loss by twenty-eight. So we weren't planning on that, so that's just some, something to, you know, we, we've kind of had our plans for cuts and how we're gonna trim and adjust after losing the referendum going off. This is gonna be an additional difficulty, let's put it that way, it's something that we're looking at. I would add to that, Senate Bill one has some additional things that are gonna make it difficult for us to borrow general obligation bonds to take care of our facilities. That starts, all that will kick in mostly in twenty-eight.
Yeah, it's gradual with the A V reduction with, with the amount of monies that we would lose between twenty, kicks in a little bit, twenty-six, twenty-seven's a little worse, but twenty-eight's gonna hit us pretty hard.
Yeah, so just an F Y I, we're, this is what we're, this is keeping up us up at night and I think as a board, we wanna make sure we're sharing that concern that we have with what's going on with Senate Bill one, loss of local option income tax, which is part of Senate Bill one. And then also, and a lot of schools don't even get Senate or get local option income tax, so they've been operating without it. We have been operating with it and we've been, you know, you build your budget around those things and then.
Well, it's not that it's going away, we just no longer are able to collect against it because the county and the city can put their own in and we no longer get any advantages of that like previously.
The school system no longer gets any of that.
Yeah, so it's not like it's going away, the public will still be paying it, it just gets dispersed differently.
With, with the four hundred and fifty thousand for the officers, how does that affect the budget we're just, are publicizing?
Bob? Did you hear that question?
How does it affect the budget that we were just publicizing, since it will come to effect next year?
Half of next, well, actually nine pays roughly, right?
Right, right, and so we didn't budget for those purposes, we would have to obviously expend money towards that, I just don't know how much that expenditure is gonna be.
Do we have time to modify the budget between now and voting on it or is it too late?
You know, each December, when I ask you to give me permission to transfer within funds, it's for things like this. I'm not trying to be flippant like that, but just things pop up that we didn't, didn't expect, you know, the, the difference in transportation. When I did add it, had planned on buying these buses and then we didn't, we ended up using it for track, but it was all within the operations fund. So we were able to do that. This would be probably be something similar. Whether or not we would spend that kind of money for SROs or whether there'd be a different plan, I don't really know yet, so I can't tell you how much the expenditure would be, but probably be all within operations in one way or another.
So there are a couple of different ways that we've looked at, we've talked to the mayor and Chief Miller and Assistant Chief Turner. There are a couple of different ways you can fund those officers, whether it be a full-time police officer versus a special officer versus optional overtime versus some other ways where it might not necessarily be that much, but the burden will be taken on by the school system. So we'll continue to keep you kind of updated as we look at what the different costs might be as you come up with them.
Good question though. And we don't, we could just not have SROs, probably not a plan we would go with, but technically, we, you know, there's no law saying we have to have SROs. It's not necessarily something we wanna do, but I'm just saying that potential.
I think it's an important thing in the bigger picture. The city is having to make that decision because of their pullbacks, so they're pushing it on us, so it's just an additional pullback we all have to look at. And it comes back to talking points to our state legislators, if people so desire, they, these are the negative impacts that are going on right now. You know, we sit there and say, school safety is one of the most important things to us, but if they're crunching us for savings, I mean, you know, what are we gonna do? So I think that's good talking points that we can share with our legislators.
Yeah, we don't wanna get in a decision between SROs and fixing a roof and other safety potential issues maybe that we have. That's kind of the decision-making points we're gonna rub up against here. Okay, so that completes operation list, we have other questions on operations? As far as people go, very quick, Tracy, job fair for transportation.
Yeah, we had, as you know, we had a great hiring season last spring and going into summer, but we did have one department that had a extreme amount of retirements and resignations and that was our transportation department. So we are working on having a transportation hiring fair. We are still in need of bus drivers and bus aides and crossing guards, so we're gonna dedicate this fair just to the transportation department and upcoming date is coming yet and details are being ironed out, but just thought I'd let you all know that that's in the works and to watch out for that date to encourage people to come. I might be interested in that type of a position.
Thank you, Tracy, any questions for Tracy? Okay, just some great news, if you looked in the paper, you saw Darren Hosapple and David Post with a student and Doctor Metcalf, go ahead.
Yes, so Ezra Tice is a national, two thousand and six National Merit Scholarship semifinalist, there's about sixteen thousand that are nationwide recognized at that, it's based upon P S A T score plus a, a index that the, that they look at. His next journey will be if he continues on to become a finalist. People that, they then become a finalist and then possibly a winner, so we're thrilled to have Ezra represent us as a, as a semifinalist.
If I had my facts right, we are the, have the highest number of National Merit Scholars in Elkhart County, so kudos to the high school staff and students that go through our district. That concludes our report.
All right, well, thank you for that. We will now move on to committee reports. So I look to our board members and our student advisor. Any committee reports you would like to highlight this month, the end of September?
The community, or the Elkhart Community Schools Foundation is having their trivia night, and that is October twenty-eighth from six to nine thirty at Pedora Village Event Center. Oh, is it, I'm sorry, you're right, that was changed.
To the.
Fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds.
It's the fairgrounds, I had both of them here, you're right, it is the Elkhart County Community Center at the Elkhart County Fairgrounds, my apologies on that. The deadline to register is the twenty-sixth of this month. Each team, it looks like it's a table for six people per team, that there's a taco bar with dessert and a cash bar by the Goshen Brewing Company.
And there is a traveling trophy that goes between the board and the administrative team, and I will make sure that after we win, we get to keep it again and we'll show it to all of you. By the outside chance the board wins, we'll, we'll store it somewhere in here maybe, but.
So are you organizing the team, Ryan, that's what I.
I am probably not gonna be able to organize the team because I'm so bookful right at the moment, I don't have time to even organize anything and I cannot actually attend it. So it would be a little difficult for me to organize something I'm not going to.
Can you give us the details then?
Yeah, I can forward you the details. I think they were copied on the email, but I can forward it to the rest of the board.
Okay, yeah. Usually we put a team together, so.
I hope you guys do. I mean, you can give up too.
So did you, did you contribute or were you just there for the show?
I just listened to pretty much Javi, but mostly Doctor Metcalf was the master of all important knowledge. Javi, I think, had a good sports answer in there, didn't you? Who knows, a couple of those. Oh, Shakira was one of the answers. So, just saying, so, you know, good luck, I hope you guys do put a team together. We'll keep the trophy if you don't.
Big talk here, okay. Other committee reports as we look around here. All right, you're not green, but I heard you.
The music council meets tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Six P M.
Um, the music council?
Go green.
Takes a while.
Just click it.
There you go.
There we go.
Um, the new pocket board, and then right now they're, we're hosting a clothing drive for the month of September, and then we're coming up with things here in October, so far we have a super shoot.
Exciting, all right, well, thank you. All right, all right, well then with that, that will come, conclude our board committee reports. All right, we will now move on to consent agenda items and we will start with item five point one, approval of accounts payable dated September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five and payroll dated September fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Five point two, park side out of state field trip to Shedd Aquarium and five point three personnel, anything that needs to be highlighted on the consent agenda items?
No, sir, Mister President.
All right, with that, the consent agenda items are approved as presented. We will now move to action items and we will begin with six point one, which is approval of bus replacement, Doctor Evans.
As required, we need to have the board approve a bus replacement and a capital projects plan each fall for the budget. So the first item would be the bus replacement plan, what you might see there is that I have plans for two conventional buses and two S P Bs or the smaller white buses each year for twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight. So those are round numbers that gives us the ability to purchase, but not the requirement to purchase.
All right, thank you, Doctor Evans. Can we have a motion and a second to open up item six point one for discussion and voting?
I'll move for the passage of item six point one, approval of bus replacement.
Moved by Mister Glick, seconded by Mister Goodman. Comments, questions from the board on the bus replacement plan? I think Ryan asked it last year, you know, you're planning for the escalation of prices.
Exactly, I had to go in four or five percent increase each year. This year, that wasn't enough, but each, we'll always take the purchases to you as a separate item each time, this is just the requirement of the plan to.
They don't ever let you do like a contract for your lock-in prices if you agree to purchase some.
Not for the buses themselves, for the fuel we can, but not for the buses.
At one, this is a general question. Years ago, there was some discussion of lease versus buying, is that something that is even worth investigating anymore or with interest rates, it's not, it's not viable anymore?
In a previous life, I was in a district that did all three, but they were some, we would purchase our buses, we actually contracted some of them out and we leased, and I found that the, the most efficient, the most least costly, what method was to buy our own buses and just run them that way. So I haven't been a big fan of leasing.
I appreciate that, I mean, not a, not questioning what we're doing, just I know it's something that was discussed many years ago, so, okay.
Some districts in southern Indiana, they have a lot of hills and a lot of mileage to cover, might be a different discussion, I think we're pretty and Dr. Metcalf feels pretty confident probably about the fact that we buy these buses, they last a nice long time.
Yeah, then we're, you know, once we own them, we own them, we can, we can keep them in service for longer than twelve years if necessary, as long as we get them inspected yearly, and actually, once they get up twelve years, they gotta be inspected, I believe, twice a year. Our own maintenance department does a lot of work on our buses, and so we kind of, we find it more cost-effective to do all that maintenance here rather than have to take it someplace to get some required maintenance.
Questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion in a second on the floor, all's in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye, opposed, same, pass a seven zero, thank you. Next, six point two, hire kindergarten teacher, Ms. Noy.
Yes, Mr. President, special circumstances regarding hiring a kindergarten teacher. We have somebody leave and then we need to replace him at Chamberlain, so that's, that's what this, and I think I've talked to all of you individually in regard to that, so I'm asking you to approve this teacher to be, to teach for us.
Okay, may we have a motion in a second for item six point two for discussion and voting?
I'll move for the passage of item six point two, hire kindergarten teacher.
Moved by Mr. Gluck, seconded by Mr. Goodman. Is any additional questions or comments from the board from previous conversations? All right, hearing none, we have a motion second floor, all's in favor, please raise your hand, say it aye. Aye, same sign opposed, pass a seven zero, thank you. And lastly, six point three, adoption of capital projects funds, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, this is a carryover from the old budget methods also, we're required to list potential projects over ten thousand dollars, and so I've listed seventeen here, this doesn't mean that we would do all of these projects, they would all be brought to you separately if they met the cost threshold. But we're required to submit a list of projects, and so that's what I've done.
Thank you, sir. May we have a motion and a second for item six point three?
I'll move for the item six point three, adoption of capital project funds.
Moved by Mr. Gluck, seconded by Mr. Goodman. Board questions, comments on the at least proposed capital projects?
There was no changes, right, from the previous ones we looked at for this, it's the same.
Dates were changed.
Other than the dates, that I knew that the dates had changed, but.
Also, I should, probably should have brought to your attention that I did put on there a maintenance truck and a maintenance van, I'm not sure we will purchase those, but those are on my capital projects on a separate page as well.
Anything else from the board? Okay, we have a motion second on the floor for item six point three, all's in favor, please raise your hand, say it aye. Aye, same sign opposed, pass a seven zero. All right, that concludes our action items tonight. We will now move on to item, or discussion items, and we'll start with seven point one, the proposed school board compensation, so recap, Mr. Boys, from the last meeting?
Yeah, very quickly, I put that in a memo to you all. And we have option one, option two, and option three, as mentioned before. And, you know, it's kind of up to the board to give me some direction, I mean, I, my recommendations are going to be if we were to add to this limitation, so if we say option one is the five thousand dollars, which is less than ten percent of what the teacher, our lowest teacher's pay is. Option two is that same five thousand dollars plus a per diem per board meeting. And then I would just say if we choose that option, I would add up to two meetings per month, or some, put some stipulation on that. And then I would say the same thing for option three, is that we would do the same five thousand dollars, one hundred dollars per meeting, up to two meetings per month. And then I would say fifty dollars for attendance to committee meetings, up to one per month. That way, we're not having to do too many, you know, committee meetings, you know, and, and like I said, not a concern with this board. You never know in future boards what might crop up, and so this just would avoid that for the future board, you know, you think about, this is what the board policy would be. So I would be okay with three, with those stipulations. I would be okay if you said, no, no, we want two, or we want one, but didn't know if there's any feedback you all had for me in that regard.
So we talked about it a little bit last meeting, I don't know, any additional thoughts as people have considered the different options out there?
Yeah, I was planning on looking the law up, because I've been thinking about this earlier today, and I, I've got to work and I forgot to go back and look it up. Does it specify literally that it's any meeting or it is only committees created by the board? On the fifty dollar options, I'm not, I mean, not saying that's the amount, but I mean, like, the type of meeting?
I don't think it stipulates that, but I would think you all would.
We would want to stipulate that, I think the law makes it looser that it could be anything that you are representing the school system as a board member, you would be entitled to the fifty, if that's what we'd come up with. I think what he's suggesting is we would want to limit it to committee representation.
Correct, because I know we kind of discussed it, that, you know, like, if we create a committee to go over policy or create a
Right, exactly, yeah.
Budget. Items like that being different than you show up and go to a community foundation meeting and like report, I mean.
Throw my thought in here, I, Mr. Boys, I wasn't sure, but you said a board meeting, I think that was what the like, did the language say on option two, board? Well, that would mean there would need to be at least four board members for it to be a board meeting. So committing members with one or two wouldn't necessarily be part of that description.
Yeah, that would be option three. I think we, we limited that one, said the same language, and then we'd say, okay, one meeting a month, and that way the board makes her committee assignments and everybody agrees what they're gonna do, and then if you go to that it could be a nightmare on pay if we just started doing something crazy and it's like, maybe you wouldn't bankrupt the school corporation, but Roger?
Honestly, for simplicity, I'd like to go with option two and forget all the other meetings. Because I think it would take a lot more work on somebody's part to drag all that. And I would suggest we go with option two and limit it to twenty meetings a year.
Twenty?
Yeah.
Twenty a year.
Twenty, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Twenty a year, because for instance, this month, you'll end up being three, and I would prefer to go to twenty per year rather than two per month.
Got you. Yeah. So, so maybe it took.
Yeah, we, I heard you.
Yeah, to that point, we, we had a, like, like Roger was saying, a maximum number of meetings that would qualify, so we had put twenty year. So, yeah, versus the two a month. Is that option, yeah?
If you would include executive meetings, right, the twenty?
Yeah, yeah, so if, yeah, the twenty would be executive sessions as well as normal board meetings, or any type of.
If you have an executive session the same night as a board meeting, that would, that would be one meeting, right? I mean, because you're not ruled out meeting twice.
I would, yeah, I would say if it's on the same day, it would equal one meeting. Yeah.
As opposed to two.
But if we had a work session, like, we had one work session this year, that would be an individual meeting.
Are you allowed to have a work session without a quorum?
I don't think so.
Which just wouldn't be a board meeting.
Yeah.
It would just be a meeting of a few people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be a board meeting.
You can't vote at work sessions anyways.
Correct, no.
So it's.
If it's, let's say, an educational work session, we just had, at our strategic planning, and a couple of you came in, it wouldn't be a full meeting, but if if we had a quorum here, then I think it would be official meeting at that point.
You're gonna use up twenty meetings regardless at that point.
I'm feeling like maybe, I appreciate where you're going with that, Roger, but I at least two, like, there's some months we only have one, but we, some months we're gonna have three. Heaven help you, if you have to hire a superintendent, you're gonna have some extra executive session meetings, someday you'll have to.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, I'm liking where you're going.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, yeah. Other, I guess, thoughts, I mean, I'm not hearing a lot of love for option three, so, which is fine.
I think that one gets confusing.
It does, yeah.
Because of any other meeting, it becomes very loose, like.
Yeah, we would have to then define very clearly what would, and it's we've all said, we didn't come into this to.
One of the things that, that, I think, that was just brought up that is important. When you do have to go through the superintendent pick, it takes a ton of time.
Yeah.
Is that is it wrong to allow for that? Can you put limits on types of meetings, so if you're gonna write a policy, say, hey, you know, you get X number of executive sessions a year unless, or maybe I mean, you're taking out committee meetings and all that, I get that, I don't know what those meetings with the superintendent, they're all executive sessions, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
The basis.
Good job.
The basis is going up as well.
Correct.
So I would say that that would, that would, that would help compensate for that, whether we hit that limit or not, the base is going up too. So we just fall into that, just that rhythm, right? If, as an example, you put thirty down, I'm not saying that's a number, let's say you put thirty of those board meetings down, and you only use twenty-four of them. You know, you only get paid for twenty-four, right, so.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can look at historically over the last ten years. Even if you would take into account when we did the search for a superintendent, had those executive sessions. I would imagine our average would still be less than twenty-five a year, so. There's probably an exception there that I'm not remembering properly, but yeah. So, so I guess, do we at least hear consensus that option, the way option two is at least, you know,
It's the best starting.
Is the best starting point, we just have to decide what, the number we may want to put in there, and, you know, whatever is proposed, we can still amend it during our actual meeting, so if we come in, if he for some reason puts fifty down, we say, no, that's way too much, we want, we can amend it down to twenty or twenty-five or whatever. Or if he, we only put five in, we said, well, that's not enough, so we have that flexibility. It doesn't have to be perfect today, but we, we don't wanna, we want to be close at least.
Terry and I could maybe dig into some of the old, the how many board meetings they had per year and hopefully we got the crazy to gather that, and we'll give you some idea, even like in twenty-three, you had a lot.
We would have had more, yeah.
You had a lot. Twenty twenty.
So one other question, just for the sake of throwing it out now, because I think it's a better idea, but just another option. What would happen if it said a hundred dollars for each regular board meeting and then a limited number, I mean, because you're never gonna have more than two a month, I don't think of regular board meetings. But then have the limit placed on any additional executive sessions?
I would say that, then we're gonna have three this month, because we have a time crunch on the budget, because we have to do certain things in the budget.
That's what I'm saying, basically, your regular meetings are mostly unlit, it's unlimited, because you're not gonna go crazy with them. You're not gonna have a regular meeting every single week a year.
That's true.
So it's naturally limited, but then you could say, hey, there's a maximum amount that you could factor in kind of what might hit a board without going crazy on those other types of meetings that the board holds, it's just a, a thought, I'm not saying that's a better way to do it.
Maybe we just, like you said, you guys just do a little, just double checking how many we might have had, you know, even executive sessions.
Based on some data, Terry and I will put something together and bring it back to the board. Probably in a discussion, I don't think we're ready to put it as an action or a, excuse me, a first reading, so maybe it'd be like a first reading or a last reading, or before we take it to action. But, and then hopefully the next meeting, for the next meeting, we can get some consensus on this.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
And then with the added discussion items, seven point two, the budget meeting time and date discussion.
So we need to have it next Monday, which is September twenty ninth. And it's at six?
Yeah, that's, yes, I, since we talked this morning, I looked it up and it was advertised for six o'clock, so I hope the board chooses six o'clock.
Okay. I know, there was a group lobbying to see if you guys could be here earlier, but I hear, I'm seeing some heads shaking no anyway.
Six o'clock is a lot easier.
Okay, six o'clock it is.
Yeah, well, I'll say, what was, I mean, first, could someone do like first thing in the morning, like a eight a.m.? That, that was gonna be the alternative, I know there were some messages back and forth about maybe five. The crazy idea was, could we just do a morning one? But we knew some people definitely couldn't already, so that was just gonna be the idea, so. But if it's been advertised at six, maybe it's a moot point.
It's a moot point, right, Bob, just for telling me, okay.
There you go, we're glad we added the discussion item.
Yeah.
Good thing.
We discussed that one.
We tried, Terry, I'm sorry. All right, all right, well, that brings us to item eight, closing items tonight, do we have any miscellaneous administrative items?
Yes, we have the special board meeting Monday, September twenty ninth at six P M. And then also, our next regular board meeting will be October thirteenth at six P M here.
Okay. Board items, anything from the board miscellaneous tonight? Well, I'll say, a lot of us last weekend were at the ISBA annual conference, so it's always a good opportunity to, I guess, hang out with our colleagues here, meet fellow board members as well as hear some interesting panel discussions, so I'll say, every year I find something new I learn, so appreciate the opportunity to go to that.
Let me, let me add to that, because one of the keynote speakers mentioned something about her own son, and the son struggles, and it was the school, public school who gave him a sense of belonging, a sense of purpose, and by doing that, helped the son be stable mentally. I hate to put words into her, but this kid was not doing well, and she was fearful. And that's the power of, of public schools and school systems, that often gets lost in this academic achievement push, that we do that, that we do more than just educate people to pass an exam or a test. It, it is like giving, so, and I know it has been good for my own kids, and for many kids too, the sense of belonging, so what highlight?
Good, good end to that story, right, he was college, probably the best water polo goalie in the country, so.
Anything else from the board tonight? All right, well, with that, we'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Mr. Goodman, second to Mr. Gluck, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned, thank you all very much.
A little wordy, didn't we? We got close.